We'll shoot you up alive.
Buckminster.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Foraker.
Here.
Caster.
Here.
Frank Killingsworth.
Present.
Kenny Killingsworth.
Here.
Layden.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mayor's report, I'd like the public to know that on a close session meeting between the board of the public works council, linemen were here, city attorney, I think nineteen in all. I can't talk about what was said, but what wasn't mentioned in the whole two and a half hours was Mayor Harpington being blamed for any of the causes for them to quit not one time as my name mentioned during that meeting. Move on to the state administrative report.
Yeah, just through a kind of an update on things, within the council agenda was the two thousand twenty-four annual report for the library, so they kind of give a breakdown every year of that. Want to thank Ally and her team for pulling all that together and everything they do down at the library. Uh, we have the Earth Day Arbor Day events coming up on the Sunday, April twenty-seventh, one to three P M. At Sand Lake, uh, the tree board will be down there giving away, I believe, maple trees this year. Uh, so thanks to Ally and Vegas Stamper and Tree Board for getting that event pulled together. Uh, we did receive notification from I B W for negotiations, so we've got notes from I O E, I B W. C C W A has not officially responded or made a request yet, uh, but we had spoken with them a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they did ask to essentially begin negotiation without legal representation on the city side. So that's something we can consider, look at, and we get a little, little farther down the path. Uh, the grant component for the outdoor amphitheater park, we got non-award notice for that, so we did not receive the two thousand twenty-five C C C F F funding, um, and the creative district also didn't receive their allocation from the, from their, for their state funding, the a hundred thousand for them. So we're still awaiting full detail of that non-award. Um, Silver Foundation is still committed their component to it, uh, so we'll kind of plan to work with Creative District and Silver Foundation to gauge interest in getting that project to a whole shovel-ready, potentially getting the architects on board with that, uh, so move forward as needed there, uh, and engage that, that interest. Uh, parks and recs side of things, uh, Open Gym down at Pritchard will be closing soon at the end of this month, um, as Briar's popping in for his aquatic center season to begin. Uh, the pool passes, swim lessons, all those have been live for online enrollment, so that's the first year that we've, we've had that up, and it seems to be functioning all right. Uh, Briar is working with Gracie Holman to implement a cycling class down at Pritchard Auditorium. Uh, we'll give thanks to C M C, C M C Foundation and the Rissler Foundation, uh, for donating funding for the exercise bikes, so they're looking at seven or eight exercise bikes, um, and Gracie's gonna kind of run the program. So hope to ask for a few other things down there to get offer more use in the summer months while, while the pool's rolling. Uh, they did get the shelter put together in the dog ground, uh, that's, that's Sand Lake, and right now we're repairing the shelter at the splash pad, which was damaged by the storm, uh, that's insurance work that's getting done, so we're trying to get that popped out before the splash pad opens up. The two thousand twenty-six C D S cycles of the community direct spending, uh, community finance plans, I think is what they're also called, um, those are actually out and open, so Senator Fisher's office and Smith's office have those outs, Senator Fisher's is due tomorrow, uh, the Pulse Air Force looking at tying in one of their projects, their hangar project, connecting their taxiway project to Fisher's office, so they're getting that finalized hopefully for the end of the day tomorrow, we'll get that submitted, and then for Smith's office, we're looking at working with Miller Associates to draft our request for water main project, separate to what we've submitted in the last year, just kind of revamping that, that submitted, to see if we can get some dollars to start working on some water main components, uh, that's not due until May one, which, let's come around real quick. So on Friday, April eighteenth, we did have an outage on Circuit One, uh, which was a planned outage. That was part of the demo project for Engine One, or demoing Engine One and Engine Two down at the power plant. They've been not working engines for quite a few years. Uh, that's some exhaust stacks that were right next to the power line down there, it's been kind of guarded off for quite some time, uh, but now they need to remove those. The structure couldn't really isolate that system, there's fuses that could be pulled, but the structure, that big wood structure down by the plant, and it is not safe to get on, and we weren't putting staff near it, and it's not accessible by truck, five bucket trucks, so that was a requirement for that full outage with that. So it took about an hour, right on schedule, added back, back live, so seem to do a good job getting that done. Uh, the Preston Bridge, the water main project, we've talked about it a few times, we've got some new site survey done out there, uh, we did meet with Bima team, did onsite inspection, the, the water main is now silted back in, so the riverbed, you know, was exposed about five or six feet, over the last six months it's silted in. Uh, we're trying to figure out what's, what component of mitigation we can put in place to help make sure if we have another flood even, it's not just gonna push that silt out, expose the line, uh, potentially get damage on it, so. Working through that and how we'll, how we'll fund that, I'm guessing, it sounds like the way to fund is probably gonna take a, what do they call it, a cost benefit analysis, I mean, because it's the single source of water for pretty much Rissler County as a whole, within the city and all rural areas, so there's dollars associated with that. Since we don't have any, like, probably repair work to do on it, since it's silted back in, uh, the mitigation would be a one-for-one, how much every dollar you have to put in for repair, you get a one-for-one for mitigation. Uh, that probably won't happen, won't have a one-for-one, but we can do some different benefit analysis to, to still get some funding from Bima to help protect that pipe, so we're working through that. Uh, the Miller Associates is contracted to do that, so we're getting that done. The street department's in the process of demoing the old water plant, so if you're down on South Creek Street, you'll see that old building's finally done, we did asbestos removals and stuff all of earlier this year, so it's, that's finally down, there's a lot of footing structures that's still there that's not gonna be removed, so we're documenting where that's all at, so we'll have just a lay down yard over top of it, so rather than spending probably thirty thousand to get the whole basement foundation out, we'll just leave it there. Uh, it's not in a really available spot, but we'll get it all documented by G I, G I S, so it's, it's recorded, plus down there. Sixteen twelve Fulton project, uh, if you go up sixteen twelve, you'll see it's up, walls are up, um, be getting weathered in here pretty quick, it's kind of on task, Blake's managing that project, so you'll see the house coming right along, uh, we did ask Edge and the potential land bank to help us with the marketing campaign for that, let's see if we can try to get that sucker sold, so we can move on to, you know, one of the next projects through that Royal Workforce Housing Fund. Downtown Electric Project, we'll be meeting with Watts and J E O, uh, later this week, on Friday, so we're instructed to have Watts have two crews on site, uh, we'll have to get hold schedules, once we get that, we'll get that info out to businesses, um, and we do plan to have additional onsite presence from J E O, also with extra, extra Watts staff, and that'll be here. For the Energy Core Project, the Transmission Project, uh, we'll kind of continue to have our meetings with Mean and N P P, we do have the fully executed grant agreement in place, so D D got there and signed, that's in my office now, so we'll put together the next steps to get the funding in, in hand, um, with that, we'll also get the R F Q drafted, hopefully get that solicitation pulled together, uh, get that in front of Board of Public Works to give kind of a review on how we want, how we want to attack that R F Q, uh, for the engineering component. So as far as electric distribution plan, we got sixty applications right now. We completed about six interviews, if I remember right, between Trevor and I, different times and some together. Uh, we don't have any journeymen that have applied to today, so they're mainly, you know, intern, interim apprentices or guys coming out of, you know, applied science degree, uh, right out of school, typically in, in April, May, um, timeframe, we do have some with a few years' experience, uh, but not through, like, a Prince program, more doing secondary construction work, substations, transmission, some distribution, but for, for projects, not under, like, a line of program. So we've still gotta kind of navigate those and keep interviews going and see how we're gonna attack that. We have not received any application for many, you know, arts employees at all, so just so everyone's aware of that. We did meet with N P P D to kick off the support services agreements, kind of the coordination needed for it, uh, with their team, got the point of contact there, we have not got that executed from N P P D, so we don't have that in place yet to enact upon it, uh, but they're pulling all that together, get that executed, and then give us the breakdown of the dollars, um, of the, the rate schedules and everything that go along with it, so. That's in process, uh, but did also talk with N P P D, they mentioned they have operation and maintenance agreements, um, essentially where they work with the cities, provide the linemen, provide a full operations and maintenance plan for distribution systems, um, under a long-term contract, so, uh, we're just gonna entertain that idea, we told them we, we entertain a look at that and see if that's something that's viable for us as a city or not, so we'll, we'll kind of pull it together, bring it in and kind of go, go to those next steps. So right now Trevor and I are carrying the, the on-call phone, so we, we got that and doing responses. Um, obviously then we have Newton Simpson, who was our kind of meter guy, locates and handles all the meter reads, and then some of the service and meter polls, um, just technically is part of the line crew, Newton is, uh, so he's still on staff with us doing, doing that work, so he's handling all of our emergency locates, we have one ability and we had to respond to, um, and get that done, but. Uh, as far as like callouts that we've had, we've had R S in town for a few distribution needs, we've got a, had a blown fuse at, like, a Verizon cell tower, it was a squirrel in the transformer, uh, down there, uh, we had an underground burn up at East Two Apartments that got replaced, we had loose connections on a transformer over by Mark Mercer's on East Fourteenth that get repairs, uh, we do have R S in town, are scheduled to be in town Tuesday through Friday this week to do a bunch of the other service work that was still pending with the on-the-line crew's schedule, so. They're getting that pulled together, there's pretty much four days worth of work for them, they'll be here for ten-hour days to, to get that done, if there's callouts in the meantime, they'll be here to be able to respond to them, so they want to vote out if we have issues. Um, kind of wrap up, the deal is kind of, want to talk briefly about kind of workload and schedule. Uh, over the past years, you know, management team and I, we've dedicated a lot of hours, well beyond what I would say a standard work week, you know, we, we put in quite a bit, uh, we did that to try to bring stability, structure, and progress to city operations, and ourselves, along with city departments, worked very hard to move programs forward, try to position the city for long-term success. So with recent, the public scrutiny, the public criticism, the keyboard warriors, you know, and then comments from, you know, members of this council threatening my employment, you know, it becomes important to take a, take a step back and kind of reassess, and look at it from, from a different perspective, it's like these challenges that we've had, made it, you know, kind of clear, a more suitable approach is needed, one that supports my personal well-being, Trevor's personal well-being, all of our staff's well-being, and professional effectiveness, you know, with the, with that, what I'm kind of proposing to do is, we're trying to get back to that forty to forty-five hour work week. I know council didn't ask me to work fifty, fifty-five hours, I, that's just what seemed like to get the job done. I'll try to scale that back, uh, we'll prepare some options to bring to council for consideration, that make sure all the critical responsibilities are met, you know, I look forward to, or as we look ahead, I strongly encourage the council to engage in strategic planning sessions, clearly get some, some goals lined up, some expectations that are vital to use our time and resources wisely. Also want to express gratitude for all the, for the many city employees, community stakeholders, some of the council members here, both taking the time to express their support, you know, that encouragement reinforces the importance of the work we're doing and the value certain of the community. That's all I got.
Thank you. Please.
Uh, well, we attended a meeting, or I did, at the Community Medical Center, they, uh, were putting together a, a mock mass anhydrous bill, so they're working with fire departments, uh, rescue throughout the entire county, uh, law enforcement, local management, and several other entities to put on a possible mock drill mission on an anhydrous league, a basine anhydrous league, uh, we're gonna have several meetings in the next couple of months to be able to organize that, but that might be happening, still to suck.
Thank you. Thank you. We want regular business discussion and action and approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
All votes.
Eighty-eight.
Discussion and action, minutes approval for April tenth, twenty twenty-five.
No for Chris. Second. Hey, Gates.
Number three, discussion and action, claims approval for April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
All right, we got invoices all here, A P Department put through, so there's, these aren't the checks, these are the vouchers, checks are ready to be mailed, uh, pending that, so, but that's what we have there. Make your motion to approve.
All vote.
Hey, Gates.
Number four, discussion and action, treasures report for March twenty twenty-five.
Um, what's submitted out on the public agenda didn't have the utility fund components in it, so I printed off, but moved out later on everybody's desk here, I realized that was this morning. Overall, a change, you get, you know, seventeen point, about seventeen point two, seven million, uh, at the end of the month, you're sixteen point nine five. Did have, uh, principal payments for bond, that comes out this, this cycle. Got a lot of bond payments that we're leaving right now. Motion to approve. Second. Vote. Five. Seven. Hey, Gates.
We will apply, discussion and action, appointment of Brayden Shiley as a police officer effective May seventh, twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the Police and Fire Hiring Board, Mayor Harpington.
Brayden wanted to be here today to get a previous engagement, get out of, I speak on his behalf. Brayden was previous an officer with us, uh, from, I think, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one, when we opened up for these new, uh, officer positions, and we have, uh, making, he, he spoke with me, and then after we looked at how the department operates, he decided to put his application in and, and, and was a police department. We had interviewed in total four, and this is one that we've, that is the, so we just request that we consider his approval. Do you have one more vacancy? Yeah. This will be it. This will be it, yes. Uh, Zach Adams will be going to the captain this Sunday, he'll start his fifteen week, and then this one will be replacing the officer that's leaving in early May. The officer leaving in early May, once, he's not totally resigning, he has wanted to switch department, how he's status only, right now, he's looking at a new business venture, but he's still wanting to help us out as far as working overtime, so.
Can Brayden certify, so he'll go.
Right, right, yeah. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
All vote.
Hey, Gates.
Number six, discussion and action, request for special designated liquor license for smoking lemon bricks event on May thirty, twenty twenty-five, and May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and June first, twenty twenty-five. Yes, well.
Those are, those are normal events, it's not three days, it's three days overall, but there's different timeframes, you know, four P M to, I think, one A M, and then the other days are eight to seven, another one eight to, eight to one, so not throughout the entire durations, those durations for each day. Motion to approve, second.
All vote.
Hey, Gates.
Number seven, discussion and action, request city crew to patch holes in Dollar Fresh parking lot, that's it.
So yeah, um, Heidi came in and put in the Dollar Fresh, they didn't really do anything with the parking lot there, kind of left me to deal with it. Two years ago, uh, one of the city crew guys came through, hatched up a couple of the big holes, came in and told me he did it, he goes, I was, I went out and thanked him, and I go, goes, I've had so many complaints, I was just tired of people complaining about it to me, I go, well, I go, take a pallet of water, he goes, you guys buy, I, the city buys a pallet of water from Dollar Fresh quite a bit, they distribute it to the staff, I said, take one on us as payment, he said, okay, it worked out pretty well, um, here we are again, needing some repatch, I was willing, I said, I talked to Anthony, and he says, we have to go through the right procedures this time, I have to go for council approval. I'm willing to pay for it, but I just figure with the city coming out, they're patching holes already, they have the equipment, they have the, the knowledge to do it, I've patched several holes in that parking lot, they don't last more than a month or two when I knew it, when they come, they last quite a bit longer, um, when they came through in Filpa, when they redid the streets, I had them quoted out, and the amount of money they were asking for was just ridiculous, so I was trying to find a happy medium, so I was either looking for, you know, them city coming out, bidding it out, Dollar Fresh paying them, or working out a deal where, you know, we fund your guys' water supply for the bottled water for the employees for however long, or whatever, whatever needs to be done.
Thank you. Thanks. Uh, just to kind of, I feel a little looked up, Mike might be able to check on it or not, so the one issue that you potentially would run into is, you know, the use of public resources for a private purpose, and then move tax exempt materials, not on top of that, so that would be, meet that. And then our street department obviously operates on highway allocation, which is restricted for public roadway also used, so we kind of run into a few snap new issues along the way with that, now we're kind of, kind of doing everything they want to do, when it comes down to that, I guess, questions, concerns, or.
Could they rent the equipment from us to do it on a Saturday?
We do an equipment rental currently that our employees are allowed to rent.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, employees can, can rent them and then utilize, utilize certain equipment, there's a schedule for, for that.
That'd be something.
Be a central option, just to come down to the materials components.
So if there were materials costing you, bought the materials, say, Dollar Fresh bought materials, then you didn't, and then from there, if they, they rented it.
It's something that costs.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I mean, it's one thing to do an entire parking lot, but your top couple of holes, it's a fact, more, a lot of materials are just, you know, I mean, cut that five bucks.
I don't know, he told me it took him twenty-five minutes last time he did it, to fill it, and I mean, I don't know what the material was, I mean, probably when I'm doing it, I'm getting bags from Farm and City, so, I mean, it's a little bit different than, he, he used leftover material, is what he said, he goes, I just, after we got everything done in town, he goes, I came over and filled with what we had left over, you know, it's.
Like some, we buy bulk, bulk, cold batch, uh, from, from, or.
Why don't we just, why don't we just look at it and see what the cost is gonna be and, and then just let these guys know.
We can do that.
What we should have that, we don't have any numbers in front of us.
Take a look at it.
Down the floor and down the, that's the street department handling, shoot, who wants to play ball, then they can do it, and they, they can lose their judgment, they go by there every day, two or three times a day, I'm sure that, you know, something could be done, have something, you mean, after hour.
Oh, wait, you know, whatever, whatever it takes, I mean, they did it once before, there's been a precedent, they were street sweepers throughout the parking lots before to help out with things like that, I mean.
It's twenty-five minutes and it takes a couple hundred bucks, and it's better for the city if they want to do it, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to do it.
But I, I think we ought to just.
Figure out what it's gonna cost.
Let the street department throw out a number there, so we make sure that that's, you know, we gotta cover our expenses at least, you know, otherwise if the guys wanna do it.
We're, we're helping each other out anyway, so.
There's not anywhere, like, pedestrians walking up to the front door, and then where they, should be following, so it's more just out in the.
It's more, um, there's a big spot right by where you can leave the parking lot, big spot over on that back side where you come in at, there's a few small holes, but I usually put small holes, I wouldn't expect them to try to build small holes up the front entryway.
Nothing, though, that within the next couple of weeks we'd have issues, if we have to hash out this, that there's not a safety.
No, 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 no.
I, I think, you know, if there were together, like, a building, maybe it's discussion.
Yeah, Kerry and Keith can, yeah, easily put something together, they will.
And I would highly recommend, I mean, it's, the water's a great idea, but probably just dollar to cents, you know.
Yeah, it's fine.
Because I just, I had some feedback today, somebody goes, well, I've got an asphalt parking lot.
Yeah, that's what's been expected.
So, I mean, as long as, as long as.
That's just hurt everybody, yeah, hurt everybody.
Oh. But yeah, we put some of this going for you, and we have to probably just want us.
So Kerry, go up for next, and then to the number here.
We can just go ahead and request a crew to at least put the numbers together, so it's, and then just come back with it. Before I work with this, except for, if it is on a gross, guys, you know, you're working out ten dollars someplace, got yourselves covered, so yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the request with the procedures to pull up, where to make sure.
All vote.
Do it, I'm sorry.
Right, right.
Hey, Gates.
There you go.
Thank you.
Great, discussion and action, review quotes for installation of new lighting at S N C Field, Arthur Richter, wherever.
So this official, uh, request for biz, and I said, I think, like, ten, twelve, um, contractors that are previously gonna work for the city, they're all registered, you work with us, um, we got three bids back, three responses to the people that were actually interested, so this is for the replacement of the housing provides down at S and C Field, that's the baseball diamond, down there for the, the south, for the south field, so the lights are bought, this is just for installation, um, so we got three figures back, um, and we had S, S E S, which they are out of Adams, Nebraska, they're right around, or upwards of, they're closer to forty-two thousand, um, S and S Electric, which is out of Mount City, twenty-six, five, and El Camino, and they were right around forty-five thousand. Um, they were all set the same criteria, obviously, we sent them what we needed, um, there were some questions that followed, so I just compiled everything into one document, sent it all, so it's consistent, so if they come back with different numbers, it's kind of on them, um, but just consistent, you know, criteria for what we need done, and that's what we got.
Depending on which one I want to choose, I mean, obviously, low bid is El Camino, overall, um, second low is at twenty-six, five, was the, the S and S, I mean, the, I did speak with Ben, uh, talk about, you know, that's a, there's a miscellaneous materials, there's some other components, so kind of proceeding if we go with him, uh, or any of the contracts on a not to exceed, kind of, not for kind of materials not to exceed this quote, you know, without a, with other approval, so. Reward to that, my recommendation would be award to the low bid for El Camino with the N T not to exceed the twenty-five thousand ninety-five.
I had a question on that, so are the linemen ready to put those lights in, correct?
That was a plan, yes.
Well, we didn't have to call the bucket truck.
Correct, we would have.
So we would have to hire.
The list, the list was needed, no matter what.
So no matter, I, I would say if they could use our big bucket truck to use, uh, limits some of the cost from them, if they could do that, how that would work.
There's a couple of the poles that we can get to with one of our trucks. There's a couple of the holes that we can get to with one of our trucks. Um, but they'll need a lift for the rest. They're more likely they're just going to have to have it as part of the job. And just kind of keep their bucket lift there for that timeframe.
Okay, that's, that's what I just.
I've got a big, big lift, very big lift. Yeah, like a four-wheel drive, like Hervers and that. Yeah, it's, I think those are sixty-foot holes, if I remember right.
When were they able to get it done?
A lot, go ahead. A lot of them came back with, um, right around from, they could start within, uh, a week or two. And then they expected that timeframe to be two, three weeks completion. A lot of those two weeks.
So we'll have a lot of them by the time season hits long.
Yeah, which were, were a long overdue to get this done for, it's all started in late April. So I want to get this sent to them. Um, I think Ben was right around, I think he said he could start in a week.
Yeah, they said they could get on, or whatever, two weeks. My destination for the, uh, Hell Camino.
I'll vote.
Get out of the boat. Oh, I did. Hey, Gates.
Thanks for being there, Ken, brother.
Number nine, discussion, discussion. Paul City Edge report. First quarter of D Y two zero twenty-five, Paul City Edge director.
Hello, Lucas Freshel, Paul City Edge. Uh, quarterly report here. A lot of the projects and announcements were kind of covered a couple of weeks ago with the Satrionic update. So I wanted to suddenly go over that, but had even a couple more conversations since the last couple of weeks. Things are progressing. Um, some of the conversations have, you know, progressed to the next step. So, um, everything's positive, moving in a direction there. Uh, Anthony already touched on construction of the four-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage. That's a city project. There's sixteen hundred and sixty-two square feet of living space. Um, I think, I mean, they're going to try to get done here in the summer of twenty twenty-five. But not to make, yeah, it's, it's, it's coming together. It'll start putting some, some weatherproofing on it, but I think for sure it'll be available by the fall of twenty-five. There's a chance it might be in the summer of twenty-five. Quicker we get that sold, quicker we can build the next house. So that's the whole idea of that. Um, North Commercial Corridor, we had a listing agreement with Lincoln's N A I F N A, thinking that we were trying to attract, um, you know, some other investors from metropolitan areas. They brought us one kind of good project that didn't end up going through, but that, uh, that contract expired April thirtieth. We're going to let that expire, um, and kind of see, kind of figure out how to go forward with that. You know, perhaps, uh, you know, that contract was in cooperation with our local realtors, that if the local realtors brought a project to town, that they would split the commission. But we're wondering, uh, uh, just going to look at some different options for it while that expires. Uh, partnered with Chamber of Commerce on a community branding initiative. Uh, maybe we're successful getting a six thousand dollar grant for talent attraction. Um, obviously something that's, that's a need around here to help fill some of the vacancies on businesses. We're also going to, uh, we've got a complimentary website upgrade that, uh, will be going through this summer. And so we'll partner a little bit on talent attraction with our website. Um, do, do, do. Uh, we've got some utility infrastructure proposals for natural gas and citronics reported on that a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we partnered with city, city leadership to meet with the Southwest Power Pool officials in Little Rock on January twenty-eighth, uh, to discuss best options for fossil utilities and, you know, citronics, uh, project. You know, just want to report, there's, there's, there's a big three forty-five K V, um, federal project that's planned from Hayes, Kansas to Auburn, Nebraska. As the crow flies, that's about ten miles west of Fall City, you know, just trying to make the correct contacts at Southwest Power Pool. Southwest Power Pool basically manages all the power infrastructure from Texas up to the Dakotas. So we're involved in that system. If there's any way that's an eighty-eight mile project, if we can get that sucker routed through Fall City, that could, you know, take care of some future needs. I do not expect, I, it's, it's a shot in the dark, but it's a shot we're trying to take and just making connections down there will, will help us. It's a partnership project between Ever G and O P B D. So if, if there's a way to get that rerouted, you know, working through S P P would be a, it's, they're, they're good contacts to have for that. Um, so, uh, we're Public Works passed a resolution. You guys know about that. Uh, you guys were, uh, full support of our, uh, we've got a unanimous eight-nothing vote on the transmission line project. We really appreciate that. Um, that's, you know, product development. We've got a committee that's also in charge of public policy. And so in our last kind of public policy committee meeting, we were just, you know, we were, we were pumped that we were able to get an eight-nothing vote on there. Then we started talking about, you know, there's going to be, you know, November twenty-sixth comes around pretty quick. So just kind of take the moment to kind of advocate for citizens of Fall City, you know, to take a look at these elected positions, um, help us carry that momentum forward, um, you know, and some of these projects we're trying to do for Fall City. So that was, uh, you know, we're going to, we're going to try to work over the next few months to, you know, try to make sure these seats that potentially be vacated by those that aren't going to run again. Um, that, you know, we, we get some folks in those positions that, you know, really want to look for these for.
Align with your vision.
That align with these, with this vision.
Edge's vision, yeah.
Yeah, just kind of the community vision, you know, you guys.
I got more like edge's vision when I read that letter.
What's that?
When you put that letter out, request and create email.
Well, there was, there was, there was an email that was.
Yeah.
Sent to just, just the committee.
Yeah, I have.
And just kind of advocating for that.
But more like for your vision, uh, the city council. I got more like edge's vision.
Well, I think, I think what it.
Let him answer, let him answer.
No, uh, well.
That's what I got out. That's what everybody else got out.
Okay.
Who's everybody else?
People I talk to.
Well, who's the people? Because they're not here talking about it.
I am. I represent the people.
So do I, so do I, but you have all these constituents that raise all this crap, but they're never here to talk about.
I'm trying to figure who runs this town, Pedro, the kid city council.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. I just like to know.
The connection I was just trying to make here was, uh, we appreciated the eight-nothing vote. You know, that, I think that.
We both named.
I, I, I think that shows, that just shows alignment with the future vision. That's the connection I was trying to make.
I think what happened there.
We want to just make sure that movement appears forward, but sorry to be going to disrupt that there. Sorry about that. Um, so we obtained, uh, formal housing study quotes. So we've got to have a housing study redone every five years. Um, we, the last one we had was spring of twenty-one. So we've got to look at, you know, possibly condensing that in the fall, this fall, so that we've got a, you know, a housing study for the spring twenty-sixth. And it's required to apply for a lot of grants, a lot of housing grants, a lot of things that, you know, are needed for, for some of that, um, those development projects. Um, we testified against sustainable aviation fuel, biodiesel, renewable chemical production, tax credits. We're successful in getting some of those removed from some of the, uh, from, from the bill that was, that was passing through there. And, you know, basically that's kind of the, that's kind of the vision that we've, that we've tried to land for the Mid America Road Campus. Uh, those are some investment projects that's supported by the governor, um, the bioeconomy initiative.
Did you get, excuse me, from the colleague down here, I was told today that, uh, the kids going to school, there's close to eighty percent say they would love to stay at Fall City.
So, yeah. That was a great, that was a great staff that year. We had a, it's the Career Academy. Um, and Jack Baker was, you know, part of what we're trying to do is trying to educate some of our views about the opportunities that are in Fall City. And then encourage them to stay. You know, if we're going to have folks that are, you know, that are going to work in Fall City and fill some of these open positions, we think, you know, the folks that grew up here and have family connections here is, is going to be the best opportunity to have future workforce. And so we've been doing that for about three and a half years, you know, in the fall or the spring, you know, we're, we're going to, to Fall City High. We're going to, uh, H T R S, we're going to Sacred Art, and we're lining out, you know, this is what we're working on. This is what we're trying to do. This is how we're trying to make Fall City a better place for you. And, you know, I'd like to think that some of that advocacy for that is, is starting to turn the page with the kids, uh, you know, that they want to stay here instead of just, you know, we want to leave Fall City. And so Jack reported, it was a very, very high percentage of the kids, um, that are in the Career Academy, that expressed a, a willingness and a want to maybe to stay in Fall City. And so we just, you know, I think some of that proactive stuff, um, you know, perhaps if, if only three years old, it's kind of paying off a little bit. Um, the Career Academy is awesome for the kids. You know, I go in there and tell them, I says, you know, I'm not trying to talk you out of going to university, but things have changed and there's a lot of opportunity around this area to learn a trade, be the best at it. And you can, you can be your own boss and, you know, that skill set here in Fall City, you know, there's a lot of opportunities. I mean, welding is probably number one. So going in there, encouraging them, and, you know, that Career Academy is starting to show some dividends. It's, it's, it's great to see those numbers. And it's great. Um, so company of Clumsen Hastings, D C, you guys are aware of that. Um, so report on the Southeast Nebraska Land Bank, which is not necessarily part of Edge. It's a division of the city, but it's funded in part by Edge. So I'll just give you a little update. We own eight residential properties. Majority were donated by owners who, you know, either couldn't keep their houses up to code or they just found a nuisance in them. Um, kind of the role of the land bank right now is to try to secure infill properties, the private market is abandoned, and turn that into revenue producing position. So developers, we don't have a ton of them around here. They're going to come to Fall City and build houses. They want to build eight to ten to twelve at a time. Right now we got eight, you know, since we've announced citronic, we've had developers kind of knocking on our door a little bit more, which is exciting. But the one thing they're going to need is they need a place to build it. And we've identified, you know, we think in between downtown and Fulton Street and in between our schools, we think that's kind of a development area that creates high value. So for these, you know, these locks become available, the land bank can hold them tax-free, um, and then we can hopefully attract a developer to do multiple at a time. That's kind of the idea of that. Um, Fall City Edge loaned the land bank sixty thousand dollars and zero percent for ten years to continue that mission of trying to secure these properties. Gosh, one of my biggest fears is as this citronic project moves forward, I mean, we don't really want corporate America coming in here and buying all of our properties and trying to capitalize on this. And so one way that we can try to keep it, you know, kind of our local economy, um, is to try to secure these properties before corporate America comes in and, and starts doing it themselves. So that's part of that mission. Uh, and kind of explain that. Um, I think that's all. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Lucas.
Okay, thanks.
Number ten, discussion. legality of letter regarding city employees talking to city council members.
Yeah, I, I just think that whenever that letter came out, that's when all of our boys went south on us, got upset. And I don't see why we can't talk. We don't spend all that time, you know, and I thought, I wouldn't think you can actually write a policy without city council permission or point of code. I think we got it here. Some boys. He should have no independent power exercise, policymaking or legislative functions whatsoever, or commit or violate government, like any plan, action, or program requirement, visual action, fixfulness of the council. So I think we should have been advised that before we sent that letter out.
What letter?
The one he sent out to us about, we couldn't talk to employees. It's right here, I think.
There was a couple of them in there. Which one is it?
This one I did.
In February nineteen. On May, February nineteenth.
And I think that's when everything kind of went, no, they can't, maybe they're romantic, they won't talk to you. They talk to us, we can talk to you. I mean, we're democratic society. That doesn't sound very democratic.
I think, I mean.
Sounds more like social.
I mean, the letter says right here, city employees have been informed, be in all employee email memo. Um, that's perfectly fine to engage in casual conversation with elected officials, uh, simple greeting, discussing community topics or receiving praise. However, any formal request for related city operations, policies, processes should be directed to the city administrator's, city administrator's office or the mayor's office. And that, that process, uh, isn't a policy or any component. It's just mainly a, a guideline to say, so we can keep protocols in place, avoid circumventing our public work procedures. Um, everybody receives the same accurate, consistent, up-to-date information as a, as a council as a whole. The city employees can remain focused on their responsibilities without having to, any uncertainty of who's reporting, who they're reporting to and what their direction is. And we have clear and proper lines of communication. All that was defined in there. That initiated because employees came up to me saying they're getting cornered by members and they don't like to be put in that situation. Now, there's some that will have no problem with that. There's others that get cornered in the grocery store and they're like, I don't, I don't want this responsibility. This is, don't, don't attack me on these things.
That's what I can't, I can't talk to this shit, the suggestion.
I think it, I think it's like a two-way street there. It's funny because he just said that the employees were concerned that elected officials were talking to them too. You know, what you just said.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what that.
Well, I don't want them to want to say hi to you because they're afraid to get in trouble. I'm not going to say any name like you want, but I don't want them in trouble.
They've been all right.
Kenny, you can bolt up on this.
I'm not bolted up.
Yes, you are. I'm just, I'm just talking.
They're bolted up now. I'm not.
We can't have another thing, too many chiefs, the old saying, none of any, that's.
I want to talk to them. You want to fire me? You can't. We can't. I'm just saying.
First of all, Kenny, I, I do want to explain a couple of things. First off, the extra little line in here where it says, this may be extremely important in cases of employee and community grievance hearings as the council is, appeals the decisions made by the administration of those matters. That was added to Anthony's letter at my request because I wanted you to understand that you are the ultimate authority. And to get information from the employees that maybe only you have and nobody else on the council has, that, that can create problems in that appeal procedure. And that's why I wrote the letter. I think you had asked Anthony about having that.
Yeah, right.
And, and that's what I wrote and said, no. After the employees resign and we, we've got to make sure that you guys remain neutral to hear those appeals. I mean, Anthony doesn't give you all the personnel files on everybody when everything happens. You don't, you have to wait until somebody would actually file a grievance, go through the Trevor, he makes a decision. If they appeal that, it goes to Anthony, he makes a decision, then it comes to you. So you don't have the, the city side, the union side, and that's the best way to do it now.
When I was on there, like if I walk by and say, hey, what are you doing there today? They don't even tell you. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, what are you, what are you doing? Putting in water servers or fixing a phone few? I mean, that's what I'm talking about. Just talking to them about things like, not about official business.
Well, it, it sounds like that would be more casual conversation.
I shouldn't take it that way.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a conversation, but, you know, if, if you're saying, well, why are you doing it that way?
Well, I don't have any idea why that, that, that.
You know, I mean, you know, like a lot of my friends, I don't even talk about that, you know, and that's why I'm talking about, you know, riding the street.
A lot of times I go to park and get water, get a drink, something to work, you know, and, but I didn't want to be in trouble doing things like that.
No, I don't, I, I think the, the biggest problem I have is making sure you guys remain neutral and can, can sit as a, a field.
I get that, yes. I get that. But we can just talk like I said about, you know, what are you doing there? Bashing the streets or.
They don't really care.
Okay, well, that's what I, that's what I was getting at. I didn't want to be allowed to do that. I feel like I want to get in trouble if I did that. I didn't want to be fired over my account because I, there's somebody who's seen me talking to them.
One guy talked to me a little bit about it and that you're a second biggest worker, if not the first we got.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's, that's what I would get that. I, you know, just to be friends and work together and not, I don't want anybody fired because I talked about what you were doing.
You take my word for it.
So I would, for everything I provide, did not tell employee how they're going to be disciplined. We have our policies in place that give discipline action based upon the agreements and the policies that are set forth by this council. It's not my own policies, it's not any of that. So if there's policy you want to change, this is the board that does it.
Mike, you have to figure out about the city streets and, so I go off on it. We in charge of that or.
I sent you a letter. It should have been emailed to you.
That's fine.
I, I sent you all an email.
My email, you guys are.
It's to your city.
Oh, I don't have that. I don't like that.
I've been not getting it.
What, not, you're not. Oh, you have to get it. Uh, do you have your city emails?
Okay.
I don't.
Show me how to do that.
And see, I only have your city emails, so.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Would you, would you please, or, 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 or take, take them and, the two councilors here, so that, I'm sorry, I.
No, you, hey, that's fine.
I, I received your city email addresses through what the agenda is. And that's where I said.
I just got, number eleven, discussion, safety committee and reference materials, Councilman Frank Kelly.
So I got, uh, they were talking about the safety committee and it's basically started up. We don't really have a real program right now. I mean, we kind of do, but nothing since though yet. So I, I got some stuff from the nuclear plant on kind of how we do stuff, like usually got these cars here too. I got some stuff from the nuclear plant, on kinda how we do stuff, like, usually got these carts here, too. It's all the reference things that, before we go on a job, when we get to the job, we'll kinda, everyone in the company, we're doing, when we get to the job, we go through these carts. Just something to kinda reinforce safety and report us issues that could happen. It's just kind of a way to get you back in, your mind back on a task at hand. I don't know if it'd be something good that we could look into, get our employees to have these when they go off to jobs. And then there's some other stuff in there, and I, all of you guys get like eleven documents over just different safety procedures we use. Some of the stuff's gonna be way over the city deal, but the nuclear plant doesn't. But we could cut that stuff out, I just wanna give Anthony, Trevor, the safety stuff they can go by. And look, look at the stuff we use, we've been there for so long, they get worked on our stuff, I want you into the safety program we're trying to build at the city, so it kinda ties into number twelve, that we have on there with that stuff. And just, and you guys will look at it now, you know, I mean, probably look at it just so you have an idea of what I gave them, so he knows and everything like that.
And you got it like four, and there's like seven hundred pages.
I know, I know.
I looked, I was like, forget it.
I, I think, that's what I brought up, but I just, I know somewhere along, but there's a lot of stuff to make it out for the nuclear plant and use.
And somehow hard work you say.
Yes, and I'll like, like, see, like, some of the policies, I think we have a policy, or training-wise, to prove that we have trained to do certain things. If you can run a bucket truck, the job you can do, that you're trained to do it, and not just go out and do it. No matter who it is, I don't care if it's any employee, just you're trained, you have a car that shows you're trained. If you would get injured, you have proof that you were trained on this. Not just something to come back and do anything, and whatever you guys think of that.
Driver's license. And we've already did it for years, back when I was in the safety, we had a car, what you was qualified and trained to drive, what you were.
I've gotta check our poll at the work every week, so you have a deal that shows your polls. And just wanted documents so we have proof that people are trained to know they're gonna do. In case something happened, and I don't know, if you have safety, I, I go to safety, I mean, I don't care. Whether they have a front off workers, I'll have them, if that's okay for me to do, I just send all of those just to kind of the events like from the nuclear plant, because it's a lot different there than it is here, but.
So September nine, prior to this council taking all their seats, we entered in a contract with KMU. Um, and that was to do the safety committee, do our, all of our training, um, which we'll talk about a little bit later, that's in that schedule. So they do the training, they do the safety management services, um, they give us our safety one-on-one, um, an audit, like an online auditing portal, and a place for employees that can't make the mandatory safety, monthly safety means to be able to get in there and access that data, so. The, the council has adopted the safety program, which says we defy laws and how the committees created, which is, there's no set number on the employees, just says it needs to be a mixture of mainly employees and not management staff. Uh, right now, it's, I think Briar, Trevor, and I are the only management staff that are on there. It's made up of fifteen employees. Uh, what we did to create that committee was ask every department to find an individual on their team that's interested in the safety piece, wants to help develop the manual, all the pieces, and attend that. They have, they have a one-year term, that's the bylaw of the policy that has been put in place. They can continue to do that each year, or they can, as a department, just issue somebody else. And what they're doing is sending these schedules with KMU, what the trainings are, so they have two trainings a month, uh, that are mandatory, you know, first one's like safety attitude. I start to just try to, I mean, it's just try to initially start even building a safety culture, because, I mean, there wasn't one when I got here, at all. Um, they had a committee, that committee was dead for quite some time, we're putting that back into place, so. What they're doing, and we'll talk about later, is the programs, which Frank's got something that we're gonna be looking at in the future, in the electric safety, confined space, um, all those. We have KMU's piece, which they are contracted to, so they submit those to us to review. Safety committee modifies those as they see fit, pushing this council to then adopt those programs. And how they're lining it up is, because it's a big manual, it's trying to do it in conjunction with how our monthly trainings are, so. Like now, a little bit later, you're gonna see fall protection and, and PPE. That says they did, they did their monthly training on PPE, they did their training on fall protection. So then they're developing those programs right after that to then get adopted, so. Kinda get the training, put it into the program, make sure it's suited, and we don't have to go back and forth, um, with it. But there's some of those that are in there that will be utilized, and we can take to the committee as we're developing, like the electric safety piece. Uh, if you look at the manual, I think we sent that a long time ago, um, it goes through all that. So the, like, who's qualified to, to work on hot, who's qualified, like, what that qualification is for in a bucket truck, or whatever, skid steer, dump truck, um, all those pieces. So we've gotta do those. Um, KMU also does technical trainings for us, which are for that reason. It's not, it's not gonna get a bucket truck certified, it's, you know, send them somewhere that's something we can do. Uh, there's different ones, like if they use it as a crane, you know, different pieces that they have to go do, the staff that we can send down to those, they're typically at McPherson on-site there, but they have those workshops to then put those through. Part of the program is just build basic onboarding for the employees. And that onboarding is, you know, general labor coming in, what do they need? And if they're having a path to the street department, what steps and progression is needed to, to, you know, to operate skid steers, operate, whatever it's gonna be.
So I do, what we'll do is have, so say once a guy's qualified to run a certain, you'll get a, like an OJT-TB type deal? It's like OJT, you kinda go out and do this job. So you can ask a question when you're doing that, and then you come back. When you're ready to TP, you'll go and make, you can't give any guidance staff to show they can, you'll have a worksheet of what you have, step you have to get to qualify this equipment. And then you get your qualifications for it. I don't know if that's something important, you know, you've got two of your guys, four guys from each department or whatever, they're qualified. We re-qualify them, a lot of stuff every year, you have to go back and do that. Just proving you can do it every year, or every two years, just to make sure you don't lose something, something changed, or. And I, 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 we can do whatever we want, I just wanna make sure that we're gonna get a safety culture. Let's do it right, not just half ass it and go on from there.
I don't think that's the path we started with KMU, that's why we hired them, because we didn't have a safety person. We paid them twenty-three thousand bucks a year to, to operate that, and, and they're doing it from a municipal standpoint of both the city side and the utility side, um, and help us navigate that, and that's what they do.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I was a question, I was just trying to bring up that, should I give you ideas for or for him that helps or helps, it doesn't, I mean, whatever. We also like have a morning meeting, every, every department sits down, just has a, putting a name or your name for today, and go drop, you know, everything, and-
Tool box talk.
Yeah, basically, yeah, just kind of sit down and-
It's nothing new for like Trevor and I, but it's very new.
I get it, I get that.
A lot of our employees that haven't been in that environment, like Cooper, I mean, if something happened, they're like,
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we gotta do other, other stuff, and that's a lot of those members that are part of the committee, because they've been exposed to that somewhere, and like, we'd like to implement this stuff.
So internally, who kind of is that safety officer role, is that you or Trevor? Like, KMU's doing their piece, but since we don't really, I mean, is there someone internally kind of governing some of this? Just make sure-
You gotta remember each crew, right?
Remembering each crew in the safety committee, now they're not out policing safety. Um, the accountability component, we'll talk about a little later, because that's, right, too, as you develop these programs, you have preferences of safety accountability policy, as though you're apt to try to define what that is. I mean, it starts with the employee, you know, number one, and then it's the levels above that. I mean, it shouldn't supervise, you know, let that employee enter and, you know, say, you know, workspace.
Apparently, it would probably just be the, you know-
Be the crew lead.
The crew lead would be that role.
So right now, if there's an accident, um, you know, whether that's equipment or, or an injury, even, they're supposed to, supposed to report that. There's no policy that states that, that's just kind of how it's been done, um, and we don't get them all. I'll guarantee you that, because we got a lot of damage to things that don't get a, get a, get a night on. So we gotta put that in place, we gotta put that policy, and we got near misses, accident reports. Um, we have our component for workers' comp through LARM, all those steps that need to be put in place, and the, that accountability policy is that piece to say, here's who needs to do this, and the process of how that's done, that ties back into that safety manual, and gets everybody on the same page. Eventually, it goes to safety committee, so all the audits that get done, the audits are our monthly inspections, so. Our team is supposed to be doing it monthly on every one of their buildings, their sites. And then KMU comes in and does one, I think we got fifteen locations that they're doing. So they came in and, you know, training people how to do it, as through attrition, as we're getting around, you know, because you can't just try to get it all done at once with the one KMU, um, lead guy Rob. So we're kind of working through those, and there's a failed item, that goes into a report, that goes to safety committee, they do a review. They gotta put something in place to get that done, you know, might be a quick fix, or might be a, we need to figure out something temporary to make this safe, and think of a long-term plan for it, which we have a lot of those that are gonna be coming. If there's a near miss, any accidents, any employee injury, those are all gonna be reported, reviewed by committee, and that committee can then report to council, whatever that, you wanna see. Then we get the OSHA reporting, the DOL reporting, all the rating that comes along with it.
Frank, no, I, Frank brought it up before. If there's a trench, and a guy down in this six, eight-foot hole trench, and there's a crew of four guys, who's responsible for making sure that guy got the safety stuff down?
Should be the crew lead.
The crew lead.
Because they're, they're doing that work, yeah.
So he shouldn't let the guy, you brought it up like-
No, I, no, I, I, no, that's what I'm saying, so-
There ought to be somebody there to make sure that-
Or their crew lead can designate a person to wa, to miss your job, to-
Get your butt out of there.
Yeah, exactly. No, I, that's not, that-
You should at least, the ladder, I mean, I never did it, so I don't know, but.
Last time around, I was going to just- In the interim, until we have everything in place, but just some, some-
We'll say, hey, buddy, you see, we've been with KMU like, what, last September, so we-
Last September, when we started it, we didn't start the, I think, the monthlies until this January. So they came in, did a whole kind of development piece and assessment, went through a lot of stuff, and walked through facilities, and just get a plan put together so they could potentially put an implementation plan together, come up with kind of the first proposed, you know, monthly trainings and, and then technical trainings that we did.
Well, who could each, each crew that goes out, couldn't have in there a weekly meeting, say, you're the safety guy, and if something comes up that you don't feel safe from these fellows, report it.
I mean, we've gotta get all those employees up to bar for every piece of that, so. I mean, that, that person that's over, over on a trench, needs to know multiple facets, you know? Whether that's how to use trench boxing, how to, how to, you know, test the soil, or, um, how to do benching, you know, whether that's safe or not, we can't just assign anybody to it, and we've gotta get all the employees up to that bar. We have trench safety coming up in our next monthly, that's our first, our second technical. Once a quarter, we're doing a technical training, they're doing confined space and trench. And they're actually trying to get our trench boxes that sitting out the sewer plant, you know, and see that we can, they're in a function or not, if it's something we need to update, you know? Right now, it's, we mainly is benching it out, you know, trenches is, we get them safe as possible. And then you have the whole water issue, there's just a whole nother-
So the whole thing, the process is gonna take a while, because everybody's doing what it's thinking.
It's gonna take a bit to, to get there, and you just gotta get the, you gotta get the employees on board, and have that culture to think about it first. I mean, a lot of the crews have been putting out fires for years and years and years, and with that inherently becomes a little unsafe, you know? They're dealing with this, dealing with this, move on, deal with this fire, and get over here. So we gotta just create that culture to say, let's step back a minute, let's assess it, let's figure out what the steps are, and what equipment do we need, how do we need a plan for those things, or we need a budget for those things, um, and, and build that, build that up.
So moving forward, eventually, would it be something like having an actual person? The worst, I'd be the actual, just a safety, as a safety person, I mean, I'm not like, I have safety guys in the job.
Well, we've, we've gotta prove this work with these guys, it's just been educated on there.
I, I know, I'm saying moving forward, if you want safety to be in your own party, have one person, that's their job, is safety of all departments. That's who they talk to, that's their main job, is a safety advisor, everything.
The council will get it.
Yeah, it's like, just to say, I mean, that would be their job, it would go with all of the departments.
Not your only job. We'll get phone calls, what's he getting here, not working?
Until somebody gets killed or hurt, then they're gonna think, why don't we have that?
That's a call.
I take that wrong, because we created a parks director for this.
I get, I get phone calls, I'm just saying.
All right.
Black box.
But, but it's something that the council can do that, like we created.
I think two things to mention on that, too, that for everyone to understand is municipalities are not governed by OSHA. But OSHA is best practice, so you're not always gonna end up following OSHA, but OSHA's already invented, so you're not gonna try to reinvent the wheel, and so you're gonna follow, try to best practice, follow those standards. And then also just what kickstarted, why KMU came in, you know, why we ended up proving a contract was, not like it's been mentioned, we got kicked out of workers' comp because of insurance claims. That's when we switched to LARM, and with that came this, this safety discussion that we knew existed when we started, but that was kind of the jumpstart of, yeah, it's time to start implementing it, you know? So I don't know if the new council had that history, but we, we did lose our workers' comp, so that's kind of what-
That's why it was a nine, nine-nine agreement, because we put it through a disciple to get into this one. It's October one.
Yep, good discussion. Move on to number twelve, discussion in action, review of the personal protective equipment program and the fall protective program, the Fall City Safety Manual recommended by the Safety Committee.
All right, so committees went through these, I said it kind of before, they did fall protection and, and PPE training um, in the last month or two months, uh, so they went through the committee, went through the manual that kind of KMU gave, gave a cookie cutter piece, um, the crew kind of modified what's fit in, there wasn't a whole lot to change with PPE or fall protection, it's pretty straightforward. Um, I think the only thing was, like, what's assigned, there was a component in there that was a sign out for what's, like, equipment, PPE being assigned each employee, then to sign off on. We removed that out of the, out of the program, that can be a policy component if we needed to, but we didn't see a need for that. Uh, so it's really the only thing we changed, we pretty much plugged our name into it, um, and it met all the requirements that we, that we needed. Uh, same thing with the, with the fall protection. There's quite a bit of fall protection pieces that need to be put in place, um, different areas. A lot of it's as simple as, you know, just thinking outside of the box and, and getting, you know, reels and making sure everybody has a harness, uh, whether that's at the sewer plant, getting down in some pits, um, or at the power plant, getting up on top of engines, you know? If the handrails don't meet guidelines, then we likely need to, you know, tie a, tie a reel to the, to the beams above and, and have that stuff available for them, so they can go onto that and get up there safely and not, and not fall off of that, so. They do a hazard assessment as part of that, um, for each site, and they can figure out what's the hazard in that area, how can we fix it, what engineer controls can we put in place? So no changes to the fall protection, uh, at all, we just plugged our name into that, and the committee told us, met the, what we needed to get that, so. Committee's submitting them to you guys to be adopted into the safety manual.
I'm watching through that section.
Hey, kids?
Move on to thirteen, discussion in action, review of the safety accountability policy as referenced within Fall City Safety Manual.
All right, if you read through those pieces, um, within the program, if it references in there what accountability you're gonna have. So those programs do not define anything of who's in charge of what, it just says, here's the program you're, you're gonna follow. Um, and then references accountability policy for that, so. Kind of wrote a one-up, um, this is one I, I've generated, this isn't for KMU or anybody. Um, it's fairly broad, because it doesn't need to be too, too defined, uh, it's just a general guideline to move forward and promote a safe working environment. Uh, the policy shows that applies to all employees engaged in any activities that are on behalf of Fall City. Um, responsibilities, our employees are expected to comply with the procedures, uh, put in place. So as we get these programs, they, they follow those components, if they don't have the right tools to get the job done, we figure out how to get that, so we can get that done. Uh, it's not meant to write up an employee because they're, they're doing some, something wrong, or they don't have the equipment to get the job done, to get it done right, so, if that was the case, they could file a grievance on me. And that's, and they could follow that process, but that's not what this is meant to do. So talks about supervisors being the lead, you know, lead by example, conduct- So talks about supervisors being the lead, you know, lead by example, conduct the safety inspection, address any concerns. Um, and their overall responsibility or responsible for ensuring their team receive appropriate safety training and understand the responsibilities under, under the policy. Um, we also put in the reporting investigation, you know, what needs to be reported so it can get to committee and then can get documented and get back to council to get implemented or get to management so it can get implemented. So those are accidents, near misses and work-related injuries. So accident, you know, uh, injury to employee, damage to equipment or any assets. Um, if it's, if it's an employee, there's a work injury also that needs to be filed with it. Near miss is just that, it's, an incident happened, but it did not cause injury, but it could have caused injury. And sure, we can figure out what needs to be done to make sure that doesn't happen and, and, and work through those pieces. So, um, we'll start kind of recording no injury days with that. Um, with this data that we get back on this, then we can get the, the DOLA numbers and, and all those and kind of see where it's at. Is, is the process working, is the program working? Is it not? We got all the, we got all the ingredients, you know, put together. So now we've just got to bring it to here so we can see what needs to be modified or not. Fifty, one percent. So that's kind of the metrics of that.
Uh, if you're on a career advice, you can call, I got nervous, you can call the guys at the nuclear plant too, they can give you, just, I mean, if you have any questions that KMU doesn't answer for, then they can give you, unlike these department clocks and stuff like that, we do that up there.
For what?
Like the department clocks, like, like clocks and the safety and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Do that stuff all the time and it's always posted everywhere. Just if you want any information on that, I can give you numbers, if you need to talk to up there.
You bet.
I'm going to deal, but I'm hoping to prove this the way it is right now.
Second.
Second.
Eight days.
That's a.
I have, I have a. Because I, it's not on top, I just wanted, but I had a job for one of my, uh, out Saturday, I was working out the alley, but I was still gone. And I just want to make it clear that to be an elected official, I don't want people thinking I've got a pole and the service getting put in my shit, my shed. He said supposedly Tuesday, they're going to be coming to put new services, but I just want to make it clear that. We didn't have anything to do with that.
I got a four, five phone call, I, I covered for you.
Well, I just, because it will be brought up. Yes.